Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone. I call this meeting to order at 5:31 PM. We'll start with the roll call beginning to my right.
Thatcher here.
Lawrence here.
Paris here.
Owen well here.
Let the record reflect that a form of council is present. If you would all please rise for the implication and the pledge. Pastor Debbie Lyons. Hey, how are you?
Hi, everyone. My name's Debbie Lyons. I'm the pastor at First United Methodist Church. And it is just such a blessing to be here with you today and to bless this work that you all are about to do. Let's pray. Oh God, you have called us here today and we trust in you with all our hearts and we lean on you, not on our own understanding. We acknowledge you in all our ways and in our meetings. So please direct the path of the faithful servants who are here to do the work for the citizens. And have them to keep in mind those rights and just in your eyes. Lord be with all the citizens who are here to let their opinions and voices be heard as well. Help them speak with clarity and decency so everyone can hear the important messages that they bring. I especially pray for our city leaders who will be making budget decisions for the next fiscal year. God, we know you speak a lot about money, but I pray those decisions are made mindfully for the equal good of all citizens, not have projects for those with the latticed voices, for all people. Oh God, we are only human and we all make mistakes, so we put our faith and trust in you for effective results. It's you who builds all things, so Jesus, you lead the way and we follow. In all God's people together, said. Amen. Thank you, Rob.
Can I give the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, everybody can be seated, please. Okay. Let's move on to number four. Do we have any qualifications, presentations, announcements? No? Okay. Let's go on to number five, staff reports. Anything from any of the staff in any of the areas? No one? Okay, y'all are making it easy. Number six, at this time, we will move into the public comments section of the meeting and hear from those who had signed in before the meeting was called to order. So, at this time, Mr. Stokes?
Joe Stokes, 2441 Shear 4200. First of all, I would very much thank the public's work for the work they did to shepherd Gary and coming up with a big huge training event. It really looked good and moved forward a little bit. And it made firm that there's only two thousand and plus left up there, hours and nights of pause. I do appreciate everything that the city does. And I would too also thank the ladies in the office who helped me with the bid issues. It was by pulling teeth to find out a lot of things. And the guys are doing a real nice job on the street to trim the back of the roof. And I do have one question, is there a target date for the start of the street?
The short answer is that there is not currently a start date, but we will have to do all of the bid requirements and make sure that we get all of that situated first. I would hope, just put it, hope by the first of the year that we would be ready to do that, that way during kind of the customary road season, that we would have weather that would cooperate with us so that we could move forward with that also.
Next, Mr. Jackson, did you want to speak now or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, please.
James Jackson, Jackson Motors, which probably straight. I just want to put a story down on the junk.
Okay, I think that is on the agenda, so we'll address that at that time, okay? But we appreciate you being here, so. Okay, next, Mr. David Henry.
I have a handout if you would like. Question, I saw that from the guys. My name is David Henry and I'm with, I represent the Windsboro Amboosters. And so, wanted to bring to the city's attention this handout that I've given to you guys. It's our first annual marching competition. And it so coincides with Trail Ride Weekend, October 15th. And so, right now, we have 11 bands that are participating and we're looking at approximately 2,500 to 3,000 additional folks that'll be in Windsboro on the 15th of October, pretty much over at the high school. So, we are working with some of the city folks, our staff and our board is working with city, with the police, with volunteer organizations to kind of help pull this off. It's huge and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big day. So, we're just kind of, as an information to the council and then to anyone listening that, you know, if you want to volunteer, we'd love to have you, because we are, we are, we're 60 days from that competition, believe it or not. And so, we're gonna have a, it's gonna be great. This has been a year in the making and we are excited to see what is gonna be brought into our community, because they're gonna be spending money at restaurants, they're gonna be spending money at the gas stations. So, it's gonna be a big economic impact for that, that one day. So, we just wanted to let the council know and just to let them know, you know, we're working together with the city to make sure that this comes off smoothly. I know we have limited, you know, bleak staff and so we're gonna be pulling in from different directions and volunteers and that sort of thing. So, just want to let y'all be aware of this big influx of people on that day. It's already gonna have a big one for Trail Ride Weekend, but this is gonna be on top of that, so.
Hey, just a question.
Yes.
Is it gonna be on, oh, the new field or the old one, or just the new one?
It'll just be at the new one. We've already started to petition or to close off a part of South Post Oak up to Newsome from 515, as buses will come in and van trailers and kids, just for safety purposes. They'll be parking at the elementary school, now the junior high and at the high school to get everybody in place and make sure that we have, you know, safety. That's where we're closing that road off just to buses for that day. And so, we'll be talking to some of those people that live on Newsome Street, just to let them know that we're working toward that. So, just trying to be a good citizen at the community, just to let people know, hey, this is going on and it's gonna be a big, a big thing. So.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Henry, for letting us know. Okay, so, Ms. Barrett, you want to speak now as well? Okay. Okay.
Hello, Billy Barrett, 3749 County Road 2426 and 1222 State Highway 11. I just wanted to get some clarification on public comments versus agenda items. So, I know the public comments.
But, public comments, you're allowed three minutes and by law, we can't discuss with you.
And agenda items could be?
Discussion.
A minute or thirty, depending on how she goes.
Okay, so, Ms. Embry, is it Embry? Y'all wish to wait for the 8.1? Okay, just to make sure, I don't want to leave anybody out here. If there's no other public comments at this time, we're gonna move to the consent items. 7.1, consider renewal of services contract with the East Texas Council of Governments for 911 addressing and mapping services. Did everybody have a chance to kind of review this and see if there might be any questions or anything of that sort? Okay, well, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the renewal of services contract with the East Texas Council of Governments for the 9/11 addressing and mapping services in the amount of $2,050.30.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have 7.2, consider resolution number 2022-60, authorizing agreement with TechStop for road closure for classic car show. I believe this is something they have every year, this is about the chamber, I believe. Did everybody have a chance to review this? It's kind of a nice thing for Saturday, so, any questions that I have or anything of this work?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, the council approve resolution number 2022-60, authorizing the agreement with TechStop for road closure for the classic car show.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 7.3 minutes. We're gonna break these out into, I guess, one at a time would probably be the easiest way. So, let's, if we could, do the July 12th. Did anybody have, I guess everyone had a chance to review and is there any questions or? Personally didn't see any corrections, but if someone else said, did, please let me know. We're all on July 12th.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the July 12th minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Okay, any in disapproval? No, so motion carries. Okay, next, we're gonna do the July 26th minutes. Once again, we have this available so that everybody can have a chance to review. Anybody have any questions regarding these minutes? This was a little short, just to kind of take care of some housekeeping, to be honest, so. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from July 26th.
I'll second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any? No? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now, we will move on to the public hearings and ordinances in this section. Public hearings is now open at 5:47 PM. Oh, I was going by this. Okay, so, let's move on to 8.1, Sigma update. I don't have anything on here, do you have to just?
He did not provide an update. I do know that they are still in the permitting process and our inspectors reviewed site plans and they are complying with the provisions of the permitting process for the city, but I did not receive a formal update from anyone as well.
Okay, so, we also have three people that wish to speak. Ms. Barrett, I just have your name on here as first.
If you don't mind, section I matters again.
Sorry, 3749 County Road 2426 and 1222 State Highway 11. So, how confident is the council that the problems we've all been experiencing at Sigma are gonna be fixed?
I believe at this time, because this is in a hands bigger than ours, we cannot comment because actually, we don't know all the details yet, so.
Were you aware of the article in the newspaper that was written about how the city was working very cooperatively and enthusiastically with Sigma?
Honestly, I didn't see the article.
Did the city give that comment?
I'd have to ask, I did not make the comment. I don't know if they did or not, to be honest.
It was just published in the newspaper, so, they said you were cooperating and you are very enthusiastic about cooperation informed of. So, I was just curious as to what that cooperation was and the enthusiasm of that.
When was that article?
It was this last week. It was from Sigma Agro Science CEO Alan Warren from Bowlene. He put a press release in the paper. He's the CEO of the main Sigma Agro Science, not just the one here in Windsboro.
So, he's the one that made the statement, not the city?
But he?
He's the one that made the statement, not the city.
So, the city didn't say anything. Just clarify that. And previously, I had mentioned possibly the city installing air monitors. Has there been any discussion on this or thoughts?
That was done in July.
Like a permanent monitoring?
How do we propose to fund it?
That is a question. How do we also propose to keep the citizens safe?
I mean, do you have any discussion you want to have on this topic, or you just want to ask us a bunch of questions?
I did discuss it in the last meeting. And it is a question. I'm not just here for myself, I love Windsboro and the citizens of Windsboro, I'm not here just for myself, I'm here for everyone and all those who don't want to come speak, who still have concerns, so I'm just looking out for everyone. We know there are things that are put into the air that are harmful, so you're going to just take Sigma's work for at the end, safe?
No, we have an independent inspector that's working, that's also reviewing plans. Is that correct?
That's correct. I've also been in communications with TCEQ. They're fairly limited on the information that they'll give me on Sigma's permits, but they are communicating with me, at least letting me know that Sigma is checking all of their requirements and there are some percentage that they have to get the odors to in order to be compliant with their permitting. I don't know the details of that, it's a little bit above what I'm able to understand, but TCEQ, I have made sure that I'm staying in communication with them and that they're following their guidelines as are. So, if that's any help at all, we are permitting it on our end this time through our independent inspector here at the city and then we also are communicating with TCEQ to make sure that, you know, they're following through on that end as well.
And we deal with TCEQ all the time, but we do know, TCEQ does no testing, so they do no testing of the air quality. They only take Sigma's records for their word, they do no testing of their own, so.
Because of the restraining order is set up in court by the cloud, is it, or do they comply?
I'm just asking in the future, so after court proceedings are over, Sigma's still gonna be here in your city, that not necessarily all of you brought in, but it is now something you have to deal with. So, what happens in a year, or two years, or three years, when they're no longer following restrictions?
I may not, let me, if I could. Right now, because of the litigation between citizens and the plant, it's not best that we comment. We don't know all the updates that are taking place on the plant, we don't know everything that's being put in place on the plant. So, for us to be able to say in two years, three years, we actually just do not know at this time. We don't know of the improvements, we just, at this time, we don't know. I mean, I'm sorry that that's the answer, but, you know, I can't speculate on what's gonna happen two years from now with us not having the knowledge of everything that's happened at the plant.
Has the city consulted with any environmental specialists, doctors, or scientists on the matter?
I've consulted with environmental attorneys who have indicated in light of the lawsuit that's been filed, that the city do nothing until that is adjudicated.
Ms. Barrett, I have one comment to make. You talked, you mentioned how the citizens around you are putting their trust in you to bring these questions forward to us. I would just ask that those same citizens and you trust in this council?
Thank you. We would like to, back to tell you, maybe?
Well, we're doing our best.
Thank you.
Okay, next, proposal comment, I mean, comments on this, Jedidamas Becky, is it Embry? Embry? I have Brandy as well, whoever wants to go first. Okay, so, are you, Ms. Becky, Embry?
Okay. It's Rebecca Embry, County Road 2426, 3749, of course, our business is here. Okay, one of my questions was, the question I really had was answered, that apparently their press release is from them and y'all had nothing to do with it and y'all are not enthusiastic, because they've done it twice, you know? So, that, it kind of bothers us that it says y'all enthusiastically cooperating with them and then you say, well, that's their press release, that's not what y'all have in mind, but anyway. The answer to that, I think, was no, that, am I correct?
That was their statement, not the city's.
Okay, that's what I, that's why I'm getting at. And then, it's just, you know, what she was trying to say is, one of these days, this is gonna end for y'all, but the people that live out there and us, if we survive, are still gonna be there, so it's, you know, what's gonna happen to us, what she was saying, in two years, in 10 years? My little grandsons, they're gonna only be in their twenties and we very well know that, you know, they're always telling us, oh, you're safe, you're safe, you know? And then 20 years later, what happens? They're not safe. They're the little guinea pigs running around, breathing the stuff, and then they'll be the ones to suffer. I won't be here, but they'll be the ones to suffer for it. So, her only question is, is who's gonna protect the people? TCEQ told us they do not do air, so, you know, this is a hard, I know it's hard for y'all and I apologize for that, but it's doubly hard for people living there. There's people that won't come up here because they're scared, but we're just pleading with our hearts, you know, to let you know that it's gonna go on for the people out there and we just need to kind of know, well, you know, when the lawsuit's gone, when all this is gone, who is going to watch over the people? And I know y'all don't have the answer now, but maybe let some people just study on and, you know, kind of figure out, well, hey, their life issue, you know, kind of needs to, we kind of need to figure out what's gonna happen to their city, you know? We know this bad stuff went as far as the animal shelter, so it's not that much further to the school, so you know, kind of need to figure stuff out, you know, for the little ones. That was what was in the report, that the guy came here and did, that the animals, that they got so many whatever, you know, things that was bad at the animal shelter. Does nobody remember that?
Yes, we don't give a report.
Well, I definitely remember it, but anyway, that was, that was only her, her only plea was to, who in the future is gonna take care of the citizens of Windsboro?
Thank you. Now, Mrs., I'm sorry, Brandy Embry?
Brandy Embry, 406 Mississippi Street and also work at the Titchin Vines. I had some questions, but apparently don't need to ask those, but I understand y'all's predicament, but I think a lot of the questions are valid that she was trying to bring up. But what struck me the most about the prayer, kind of changed what I wanted to say, was her saying right and just and, you know, what's right and just about this situation? Is it right that we have to be affected and be ill for months and months and months? Is it just that a company gets to come in and make millions of dollars and our little business that we worked, she's worked her whole life to build is destroyed? Our customers have stopped coming, not completely, but literally people drive up to our business, turn around and get in their car and say, I cannot do this, I cannot come to your business because it's that awful. Granted, they're shut down now because of us, I don't think they would have done it. I don't think they would have put their proper stuff up there if it wasn't for us. So, people may think what we did was wrong, but it was the only way to get anything done. The state didn't want to help us. Unfortunately, the city, I get that your pants are, you know, tied a certain amount, but I think we just, we want to know that you're listening to our pleas. And back to the report, you know, he did talk about these super high levels of nitrogen dioxide. And if you read, the very first thing it says is, it's an immediate synthesis of nitric acid, which is used in fertilizer production and so, you know, trying to figure out, why was that gas coming to our business so much, to the animal shelter and a few other areas where it was going? And then if you read about what it does, it causes irritation to the eyes, nose, throat, and respiratory tract. Well, let's go back to December, the very first time I came here. I don't know if y'all recall, but I read the list of the complaints long before we ever knew what chemicals were being put in our lungs and nose and throat. Sulfur dioxide has been detected, nitrogen dioxide. There was the independent person here, they never turned the kiln on, not one time, not once. He got in his car, picked up the equipment, we watched him. He got in his car, picked up the equipment, we watched him, put it in, they fired it up an hour and a half later. We saw it. So, you know, those tests, unfortunately, we appreciate y'all so much doing that because it, I mean, we do, but those tests didn't give us anything of accuracy of what's coming out of there. But we do know something's still coming out. The plant's not completely shut down if the kiln's not running. If the kiln is completely separate, there's other areas, there's the silos. She was asking last week, I don't know if anybody asked about that, it was last month, what they're doing in those silos with that off-pressure casing?
Yeah, I sent Ms. Barrett an email in response. I tried to make contact with their own, some phone calls, we kept missing each other, but I did send an email response. And I just asked, called and asked them to give me the information on the silos, and I just reported to Ms. Barrett what they told me.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm not sure if she got there or not, but I'll check. But anyway, it just, it all goes back to what's just and right, and they are in the city. And with that comes a certain amount of obligation, I think, from the city, you know, leaders. And y'all don't have to speak on our behalf with the litigation and all of that, but I think you just have to help us with what's just and right.
Just one thing I would like to add too, and that is, the editor of the newspaper is here tonight, and if you have questions regarding that article, perhaps you should talk with him.
Can I ask any questions that are important?
Thank you.
Nothing further on eight point one, let's move to eight point two. Consider fee waiver request by the Winsboro Community Resource Center.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Alderman, Alderman, Madam manager. I'm Eric Peterson. I'm at four oh one County Road four eight four seven in Winsboro. Unfortunately, it's not in the city's city limits. However, I am the president of the board of the Winsboro Community Resource Center. We're a five oh one three C organization founded 12 years ago by any of the leaders of the city to serve the needs of the citizens of Winsboro and, and those living within the Winsboro Independent School District. So it's a little broader than just the city. In the first six months of this year, we have served more than a thousand families, and that means about 25, more than 2,500 individuals have come to the Resource Center. We're also known as the food pantry, so we're the local food pantry. And as we know, in the past two years, it's been pretty turbulent as far as all kinds of things. And in order to serve the needs of the community better, the board needs to reexamine its goals and mission. And before I continue to have any questions. So we're having a workshop on Saturday, August thirteenth, from eight to 12, in the Carolyn Jones Community Room. And I'll come before you today asking for a fee waiver for the use of the Carolyn Jones Community Room. We have already submitted our deposit, our security deposit before that event, and we're just asking again for a waiver of fees.
Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from any vote on this issue as I am a board member on the Winsboro Community Resource Center Board.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else have any questions for? No, I think we all appreciate the hard work that y'all do in regards to the community centers.
Madam Mayor, I make, I'm sorry.
I was going to move that we approve the fee waiver request by the Winsboro Community Resource Center.
I'll second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Nope, motion carries. Thank you, sir, for coming forward. Okay, next, we have eight point three. Consider action on request from Jackson Motor Company to place an accessory, accessory building. Mr. Jackson has already come forward that he wanted to put up a storage building, I believe it was, Mr. Jackson? Did everybody have a chance to kind of just review? And if y'all have any other questions for Mr. Jackson, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer. Mr. Jackson, do you have anything other you'd like to add, sir?
James Jackson, six oh six Winsboro County Street, Jackson Motor Company, Winsboro, Texas. Uh, Miss Morse, she asked me earlier why I was going to put my building in front of my office.
You're putting it in front of y'all? Oh! I was like, wait a minute.
That's kind of trying to clear that up. It's, it's long behind, and it's just quickly for, you know, excess tools and all that.
Okay.
It's not going to have any power of water or anything.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Jackson?
Madam Mayor, make the motion we approve the request for Jackson Motor Company to place accessory building on his property.
I'll second.
Call in approval?
Aye.
Against? No? Your motion carries, Mr. Jackson. Thank you for coming forward so we can ask questions if you need to take. Okay, let's see, let's move on to eight point four. Public hearing dangerous standard structure at four oh two North Chestnut Street in Winsboro. If anybody on the council had a chance, there is, um, actually, we have this on here twice.
One's a public hearing.
Okay, so is there any public comments regarding this structure?
Yeah, hearing.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing at six oh eight P M. Anyone regarding the structure on four oh two North Chestnut Street? No? Yes, sir?
Residents?
Um, is it? I couldn't really tell by the pictures, to be totally honest.
There was huge desert.
Okay.
And it's abandoned property. Yes. And the owner is a state citizen.
Disastered.
What belongs here? Family lost here. So it's not that, it's not anymore.
No, I was just looking, to be honest. Is it currently owned by?
That's a question.
Alton, Alton and many Williams. So if no public comments regarding this issue?
Madam Mayor, rather than close this public hearing to reopen another one, I would like to suggest we could also conduct the public hearing regarding the dangerous substandard structure at Southern Fort North Walnut at this time.
Okay. So did everybody have a chance to kind of, um, review that? Do we have anyone here regarding the structure at seven oh four North Walnut Street, Winsboro? No? Should I believe? The title on that one goes to Mr. Ronnie Dickens. So just, is there anyone here that wishes to address the property at this time?
Do we know if the taxes are being paid on either property?
I know that, uh, four oh two, they're not paying. Last, maybe a couple of years, and several of them, um, four, sorry, four oh two, they're paying to, and, uh, for, so. But the owners have contacted, written, had attempted to make, um, uh, some kind of hell with all of them.
Have both these, either the property leaves against the law or...
Seven zero, I'm sorry, four oh two does. We heavily know it, but I don't know if somebody pays it or not. And there is a current, uh, the general's, uh, lady, uh, ordered at the county clerk's office, and, uh, that one has been contacted and served with, uh, a house of experience. So, uh, we have, uh, our, our action on this.
Any other comments during the public hearing on these two properties? Once again, that's four oh two North Chestnut Street and seven oh four North Walnut Street. No? Okay, so at this time, we're going to close the public hearing at six twelve P M. For both structures. Uh, so then we will move on now to eight point five. Consider order number two oh two one oh eight four regarding abatement of dangerous substandard structure at four oh two North Chestnut Street in Winsboro, Texas. Council on this one, there was a chance to review exactly where this property was located. Um, there was also photographs of the property. Um, I think you can see by the photographs, it's like it has many issues going on. Did everybody get a chance to review? Um, it looks like there's also as well as, looks like there's like a trouble even issues with this property.
Yes, uh, there should be, uh, issues.
Just going by the photographs provided, um, it, it looks pretty substandard. I'll just put it that way.
Madam Mayor, based on the evidence presented regarding order number two thousand and twenty-one zero eighty-four regarding lot two, partial lot three, block sixteen, City of Winsboro, also known as four oh two North Chestnut, make the motion, see council find this structure unfit for human habitation and order its demolition within 90 days.
I'll second.
Okay, all in approval?
Thirty days.
Sorry?
Okay, I'll be in my motion for 30 day demolition.
Okay. And this one, you second it?
Yes.
Okay, so all in approval?
Aye.
Any disapproval? No? Against? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, um, we have eight point seven. Consider number two oh two one oh nine six. This is regarding, uh, the abatement and dangerous structure on seven oh four North Walnut Street in Winsboro. Did everyone on the council, once again, we're provided with a map, photographs of the property, um, I think everything that we could see that might be needed. The photographs, of course, show, and it has also the title, company, paperwork, and then we have also photographs of this structure, um, as we can see once again.
No, we just...
We just did four oh two.
We just did four oh two. We're on seven oh four.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so I guess if everyone had a chance to review, there's quite a few photos uploaded, um, and then you have a chance to also draw up all that structure ideas?
I just have a quick question. Once these are demolished, then do we come back? Mackenzie, can we come back and discuss what's done with them after that? Or can we talk about that now? Or how does that work? Because this is just to demo it. Okay. So then if, after it's demolished and we have our lien on it, then it sells, we get that money back, whatever we have put into it? Because I'm assuming after we demolish it, we're going to have to maintain that.
Or on the, in the case of four oh two, with the taxes being as delinquent as they are, we could seek a tax forfeiture. Madam Mayor, regarding order number two thousand twenty-one zero ninety-six, the property of lot ten, block one of the Carol Edition of City of Winsboro, also known as seven oh four North Walnut, I move the council find this structure substandard unfit for human habitation and order its demolition within 30 days.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. At this time, is there any questions from the meeting, sir?
None.
Okay. Um, so the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September thirteenth, at five thirty P M. Anyone who wishes to present business to the council at that meeting must submit a completed request to be placed on the agenda to City Hall by twelve P M. on Monday, eight days prior to the meeting for approval to be placed on the agenda. I hereby call this meeting at six seventeen P M.
I had to make sure she got the emails, and she acted like she didn't get it. Make sure she got it.